Friends do work well, don't they? Five twenty-eight, let's go ahead and get started. We got a packed house, so don't want to waste y'all's time. So I hereby call to order the City of Hartsfield, South Carolina, Public Hearing and Regular City Council Meeting of Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you all so much for being here. We've got a, both a short and a long agenda with not many items of business, but some of them are substantial and important. So let's get to it. And to that end, I will ask Councilwoman Mack, if you would, to lead us in the invocation. We'll follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance and end that with the Civility Pledge. If you would, I invite you all to stand and pray in your faith as we pray in ours.
Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, thou art God and God alone. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that we assemble in this hall of halls to do the business of the City of Hartsfield that we all love so much. Lord, we thank you for your divine protection, your leadership, and guiding us in all that we do and say. Let us uplift Hartsfield. Let us uplift one another. These are tumultuous times, and we need your help, Lord. So we call on your holy presence to come in and do just that. Be the God of all flesh, as you are. Lord, we thank you now for the divine protection that you give us every day and the new mercies that we see every morning. We ask you to bless each and every one, in the sound of my voice, those that wanted to come and were not able to. But, Lord, we pray now that you would add a blessing to this prayer. In the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen, amen, and amen.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Mack. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll kick it off. I pledge to build-
Allegiance States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now for the Civility Pledge. I'll kick that off. I pledge to build a stronger, prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement. We say the voters can vote once and find a solution for the betterment of our city. Thank you all very much. First order of business of sorts. I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four Regular City Council Meeting.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion on the minutes of the October eighth meeting? Any corrections? Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the October eighth Regular City Council Meeting, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving right along to our presentations. Ms. Bulware, you're up first with Main Street, South Carolina.
Matt's gonna-
And Matt from Main Street Hartsfield.
So Jonathan's sister had, she passed away-
Oh, no.
Yesterday, so he's not here. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the whole blitz with Matt.
Sure. And thank you all for having us. And we all know, Jeannie and myself, we're excited to just kind of put Main Street in front of you again. This is a great program that downtown Hartsfield has greatly benefited from. And with a couple of new council members, we just want to give you all a chance to kind of take a deeper dive into what the Main Street program consists of. Also to remind you that tomorrow, we'll be hosting our colleagues from across the state. We have about thirty-five people roughly coming in. They'll get a chance to explore downtown Hartsfield, do some shopping, kind of learn about the process and the programs we have going on. And then we have some specified sessions where they'll learn about some more in-depth kind of tools that they back to their communities and kind of learn and then go from there. So thank you again for having us this afternoon. And I'll let Jeannie-
Yeah.
-pick it up.
So I have ten minutes, or eight, or six. I don't know.
Six is good.
You're right. Okay. You've got a big night. All right, so do I have a clicker?
Uh, first we'll-
Or do I just say click it?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so Main Street, y'all are one of five accredited communities in South Carolina. That is amazing. Georgia has one hundred. We have five. This is really big for our state. So Main Street is focused on economic development with historic preservation as the foundation. So the four-point approach. Click. Downtown, why is downtown important? When people come through your downtown, people think, hmm, this is struggling. This is not the best place for investments, or it's great. So your downtown space is really where people say this is the litmus test of, you know, growth and investment. Okay, next slide. We have a holistic approach. So you have a Main Street America, which is the national program. You also have us at the state level, which is the inner circle. And then you guys at the local level are doing the work. We support you, but we cannot be here. So you have to be able to do the work locally. Next slide. All right, so our program at the national level is over forty years old. We have two thousand programs nationwide. South Carolina is really unique in that we have a program at the state level that is focused in the municipal association. So nobody else has that. They are focused at, you know, either the nonprofit level or they're at Department of Commerce or the state level. And so this is really special for our state, that we are housed within the municipal association. Next slide. Lots of information here. So you can learn about Main Street. We have all sorts of trainings and information that helps you better understand what we do, which is focused on economic development in the downtown district. Next slide. Again, in South Carolina, we are not as old as the national program, but we're close. We're about forty-one years old, and we've had four directors at the state level. And we also have expanded at the state level with, you know, new people supporting us. So not only am I your person, but we also have Jonathan that supports us. Next slide. Lots of levels. We want people and communities to be able to participate. So we want folks that are at just the learning stage to understand what it is to be focusing on economic development. So that's the friends level, and we have the accredited level, which is where you guys are. And then we have, next slide. Next, yep, then we have GAMSA. There are two, only two GAMSA communities in South Carolina. Greenville was GAMSA Great American Main Street Community in two thousand and three, and Florence became GAMSA in two thousand and twenty-three. We want to see Hartsville at that point. Yep, keep going. You're good. Yep. All right, so y'all are at the accredited level, and we want to progress. There are opportunities to do that. Next slide. We do this every year. We come to the community and evaluate where you are. What are we looking at with organizationally? Do you have struggles with partnerships? Do you have great acceleration with preservation? Do you have partnerships that are really, really strong? Or do you have areas that need support? And so that's where we come to the community and evaluate what's happening. Next slide. Okay. And this is really what we think about. It's not a checkbox. We need to let communities know that this is not a one-time thing, where you are accredited and that's it. This is about what do we do every year to support downtown revitalization. You have, I think, a hundred percent occupancy?
Close, about ninety-five, ninety-six right now.
Oh, it's amazing. We are so close to GAMSA and telling that story. And why? Why did you get to that point? Next slide. Main Street is dope. Okay. So silly. It's a silly acronym, but it makes you understand what this means. So D, next slide, is design. We're talking about investing in that physical space. You know, does downtown look, you know, decayed or atrophied with closed storefronts? No, downtown Hartsville has amazing improvements that are happening. How are you talking about the story of downtown? Next slide. It is not Matt only.
Y'all listen closely.
Yes. It is not the mayor only. It's not council only. You guys, all right, I'm talking to you people. This is the biggest audience I've ever seen. This is where you guys can be a part of this. It is, it is your town. It's what you want it to be, you know? And so finding ways to engage with every outfit, every factor that wants to be in this space. What do they want to see downtown? My daughter has a list of all the things she wants to see. Next. All right, part of the dope promotion. All right, this is not just events. You cannot have, I had one community reach out to us recently, and they said, "We have twenty-eight events a year." And I said, "Oh, that's not great." But they were thrilled. That is not healthy for your downtown district. Why are you having those events? What are they for? Are you trying to get people in those downtown businesses? Thinking strategically about what you're doing. Promotion relates to, you know, you want the bypass, but you also want your downtown district to be a viable place. So how are you talking about the downtown district compared to Florence or Hartsville? Or, your Hartsville, or let's say Aiken. You know, how are you different from that space? Next slide. What do you have? So what businesses and what buildings exist in your downtown district? You might have some gaps. I love the industrial space. It's like anchoring your downtown district. How are you anchoring that with your vision for downtown? Next slide. All right, so you have me and Jonathan. He's not here tonight, but you have Matt. Our job is to help you. We cannot be here every day. And so the goal is to have Matt have the support of us, but also all of you guys in this community. Next slide. Do you know where this is? Okay, I'm not gonna tell you. It's a neighboring community. I'm not gonna tell you. It's a neighboring community. And, you know, this kind of stuff happens every day in our downtown districts. How are you addressing this? Next slide. This is you guys. It was not. It was not the- But this slide, I mean, I love this. You've got plantings. You've got a beautiful building. You've got an, like, an awning area there. Next slide. Our job is to help you do this work in a way that is effective. And so we have quarterly trainings and Main Street Coffee Break every month. I got two more minutes. Keep going. We have secured over three hundred thousand dollars at the state level to support you. We provide support services or technical assistance. Most recently, we were here with We Shop SE to talk about that program that is really, really important for you guys. We are not going to communities that are not part of our network. Next slide. Okay, there's a whole bunch there. So Clemson, when they say, "Who's ready for us? Who wants to be a part of our program? Who can support us?" I say Central. I say Hartsville. So wherever you are in this platform of Main Street work, it helps us to help you. Next slide. Healthy Main Street, define and curate the purpose. Matt, y'all are expanding where you are in the downtown district?
So we're looking at ways with the National Plan, how are we tying in other parts of the community, those corridors to connect with downtown? So are our key areas staying the same? You know, is that historic district that we look at? And then how are we tying into the Sixth Street corridor? How are we tying to the Fort and Rover Project?
Yep, so you have this map that's indicative of Dillon. But what do we look at for downtown Hartsville? Do people understand what it means for Main Street? Next slide. Tell your stories. These are my most favorite. In fact, he is featured. Who's the gentleman?
That's Dave.
Yeah, Dave.
We all know Dave.
Dave is featured on our We Shop SE rack cards that are across the state. And this tells a story about Main Street, you know, these small businesses and what they're doing and how they're trying to grow their programs. Next slide. I love this one, too. All right, so you have your handout, your trifold in front of you. Matt is featured on there. This is about the program. So we don't talk about the businesses only. We talk about the program. What are you doing to support the work that's here in the community? And this is so important. You know, you have to, you have to toot your own horn, right? You want your neighbors to talk about what you do and why you do it. Next slide. All right, another slide. That's great. Y'all are featured in the MASC uptown.
Actually, twice. This was the one for the summer promotions that we did. How are we keeping our businesses with a steady foot during our slower summer months? We did the Passport Program. And actually, we were just featured again, I think, this past week with our new cultural district.
You were, yeah. Next slide. How many slides I've got left? I'm passing my time. All right, so you focus on core principles. So Main Street is not just event planning. It's not about, hey, we're amazing. We've checked the box. It is all about quality. It's all about changing the mindset of the downtown district. People say, "Oh, why do you think about downtown?" You think about downtown because that's where you bring people, to recruit them, whether they're moving to your community or it's an industrial space. Next slide. Or, ah, so nationally, since nineteen eighty, a hundred and seven billion, billion, billion investments have been made. And statewide, we've had nine hundred and four million. We're past that, actually. I have to get some stats for that. It's all about awareness, accountability, and achievement. You're not doing this just for fun, right? Next slide. All right, so these are people, all of you guys are a part of this process. All of you can be a part of this. This is not people coming to council saying, "Hey, let me help you write an ordinance." Nobody's gonna come to you and say that, right? They're never gonna say that. They want to say, "How can I help you do the great stuff?" Next slide.
And as you're all familiar, I'm sure, this is our transformation strategy for this year. We are in the process of updating and working through it. And big three key points, so when people ask, "What is Main Street doing?", it's centered around these three projects. The first is the cultural district. The second one is working with Coker University and the Government School. We're closely to kind of see how we can involve our students more so downtown. And the third is just being that strong resource for our businesses. A lot of them have kind of tapped out on the facade program. So it's now, it's like, what else do you need? How can we support you, whether it's through a new product or a new service you want to launch?
Next slide. And that's it. Follow us on social. We have had a really good, good presence celebrating all the work with you guys and other programs. We also have been celebrating We Shop SE. Does anybody have questions?
And I'll just close really cool by saying, if you have any questions after this, our office is down at one thirty, one forty-seven West Caroline McKee. Even if I'm not there, there's a giant board outside of my office that has tons of information about Main Street Hartsfield and where we've come from. There's some great old pictures of downtown Hartsfield to where we're going as well. So stop by and see me.
Great. Thank you both so much. We do look forward to being on that GAMSA list.
I'm ready.
We know that we have a real gem of a downtown here. And Matt, I really appreciated your comments about, we, alluding to the, how we can take the successes that we have experienced and that we benefit from here in downtown Hartsville and apply those to other parts of town so that we can expand that success and expand that vitality so that more of Hartsville can enjoy the same sorts of things that we enjoy here downtown. But we do appreciate how important our downtown is, and thank you both so much for the work that you do to support that and keep it going.
And thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we move on? All right, well, Mrs. Traver, we would love to hear about your Eagle Scout project.
My name's Natalie Traver. I came in a few weeks ago, asked a council meeting to kind of introduce my project, but at that point, I wasn't on the agenda. And now I'm here, ready to present. So I'll just go over, I talked about it briefly, but I'll go with more depth about it. So this is, I'm part of Scouting America, and I'm here to propose my Eagle Scout project idea for an outdoor stage for Hartsville.
Could you, before you keep going, state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Natalie Traver, three sixteen, Montegoat Lane.
Thank you so much.
We can go ahead and show the next slide. So this is an updated engineering rendering of the stage and what it should look like. I met, after last month, when I met with you all, I met with the Hartsfield ARB and approved it with the contingency that I'd come back and get it approved by you. And we updated it to add, on the other side, it's not shown here yet, but on the other side, the one-size-stairs and the other side will be an ADA compliant ramp. So the main construction of the stage is just pressure-treated lumber with polywood decking and lattice. And the polywood is to preserve the deck of the stage and the lattice from the elements. And the roof is sheet metal roofing. Next slide. This is, I took a picture of the site in Berry Park, and I also have an architectural site plan prepared. And I finished, I have the full engineering drawings for my engineer now. And so I just, were there any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments from the crowd? Well, thank you so much for coming back to show us the rest of your project. I'm really excited to continue to work on it. I know it's been, been working on it for a long time. So we appreciate your perseverance and your willingness to adapt and move through the process. But does anybody else from council have any questions or comments?
I'll make a, I'll make a comment. First of all, Natalie, thank you for choosing Hartsville to be where you're gonna do your Eagle Scout project. I remember when I was doing mine in trip, five twenty-three. So best of luck to you. Thank you for choosing here, and wish you the best, and can't wait to see what you do.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ms. Mack, did you have a comment?
Yes. I wanted to also commend you on your work and your endeavors to build this stage. I wanted to ask about the material. Is it laminated material that will not need to be painted? Or is it going to require staining or painting for the upkeep of it?
So some of it is laminated beams, and the rest of it that's pressure-treated, it would be very difficult to stain. And so that's something that just weather's into, it won't require that. It'll weather into looking right.
Thank you.
And I'll say, Ms. Mack, as it pertains to our conversation at the last meeting about Pride Park, this new design, to me, looks much more applicable to Pride Park. So I think, you know, it's worth pursuing this idea as, for upgrading or enhancing the stage at Pride Park with a design like this, or at least similar.
We'll have to look at it and look at Pride Park and see.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Anybody else? Well, we're hearing none. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Excited to keep this moving.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Up next, I believe we have Mr. Copeland from Skates, Skate Hartsville. Is Dr. Woosley Goodman here as well? Is it just you tonight, Casey? Oh, yes, good, good. We have both of you. Thank you. Start off, state your name and address for the record, and then we'd love to hear what you have to say.
I'm Casey Copeland, four eighteen Laurel Oak Street, Hartsville.
Megan Woosley Goodman, one one zero three Pinehurst Drive, Hartsville.
Thank you so much. Oh, we have materials.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm not gonna read this now. I'm much more interested in what you have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to be here and putting us on the agenda. My name is Megan Woosley Goodman, and this is Casey Copeland. And we're here representing Skate Hartsville. A little bit about Skate Hartsville. We envision a vibrant, inclusive community where individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities can come together and enjoy active lifestyles, creativity, and unity. We are a local association dedicated to bringing a safe, admission-free, inclusive, and family-oriented facility for skateboard, scooters, rollerblades, roller skates, BMX, and wheelchair skating, which is known as WCMX to Hartsville. We have ten values: community, safety, inclusion, respect, creativity, health, education, responsibility, empowerment, and collaboration. I want to pause for a minute and talk a little bit about inclusion. There are many outdoor recreation facilities in Hartsville. And there are basketball courts, tennis courts. But none provide like a multi-age, multi-people or person place where so many people, because, you know, basketball courts only can hold so many people. But a skate park is large enough to incorporate all different kinds of ages of people at the same time. And the most important thing I would like to highlight is that it would be admission-free. We don't want to price anyone out of an experience. So the entire City of Hartsville could visit. All right, this is the team that we're working with. I'm gonna give you a second to look through. There's a variety of different community members that have been working with us to develop this project.
Ready for the next slide?
I was just letting people read.
Okay.
So since our goal is to have a skate park in Hartsville, we want to begin with defining what a skate park is. A skate park is a multipurpose, built recreational environment. And I'm gonna show a couple of slides here with pictures of different kinds of parks with different activities, so you can envision just how inclusive it is. When people think of skate parks, they often think of skateboarding, but that is not the only thing that you can do. There's a lot more than just skateboarding, scootering, and rollerblading. We have BMX biking, roller skating, and of course, wheelchair motocross. Wheelchair motocross is a sport in which wheelchair athletes perform tricks adapted from skateboarding and BMX biking at a skate park. So we have the ability to bring people to Hartsville to use these facilities. So that, of course, is a tourism and economic advantage. And skateboarding itself is very accessible. And you can see here in these slides that many people with disabilities skate in various different ways. So we circulated a petition in April of this year, and to date, it has received twelve, one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine signatures. Some of them are in the room with us tonight. If you've come to support a skate park, I'd ask you to raise your hand. So the signature and comments make up too many pages for us to have brought to City Council, but you can visit our petition on our Facebook page, and it's also been filed with the clerk. We're involved in the community. We are a member of the Hartsville Chamber of Commerce, but also the community supports us. First, I'm gonna start with talking about letters of support from different organizations. Our first letter of support comes from the Clemson Extension, and they've expressed support for this project due to rising concerns with the obesity epidemic. And they said, actually, if we were to go forward with this project, that they would be willing to provide small funding for things like seating or shade or other small projects like signage. We also have a letter of support from Trent Hill Center for Children and Families, Cypress Adventures, and LOL Steam School of the Arts. All have acknowledged the benefit of this kind of facility for the children and youth that they serve, but also the larger community. And we have the unanimous support of the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. We've met multiple times with them and, as well as worked with the Parks and Recreation Department, who have been a pleasure to work with as we've developed our plan. One of the things I want to share with you is that we held a Go Skate Day on June twenty-first of this year, which is actually Go Skate, a national Go Skate Day. But we organized this event, and it was held at the basketball court at Byerly Park. We had food trucks, raffles, music, and multiple local organizations came. They're listed on the slide up there. At the end of the night, a hundred and twenty-five attendees with three media outlets attended. And I want to just note that we also were competing with a downtown mains, or a downtown event- event at that night, so that in fact, we got so many people to the basketball courts to use the facilities that we set up, the ramps and the rails, um, was, was pretty heart, um, heartwarming. Um, and you could just see the joy on people's faces as, as parents and, and children, um, skated together and, and teens and adults and, and, um, people of all different abilities use the facilities. Um, what we learned is there are a lot of people who, who would make use of a skate park should we build one, but, um, you don't have to take my word for it, um, we have a short video that was made by, um, Full Focus Photos and Film in conjunction with Hartsville Little Theater. Thank you.
Very good, very good.
Some of the children that starred in that film are in this room.
Recognize some of them.
All right, um, so, uh, let's talk about some of the partners we have, um, that could bring help, that, let's talk about some of our partners that we could bring to Hartsville to help if you choose to build a skate park. Heart of Stoke Foundation is an organization that is focused on the needs of underserved children through the provision of no-cost skateboard equipment. This is an organization that could come to Hartsville if we have a skate park and help those who can't afford the equipment to get started at no cost. The Friends of Skate Parks Foundation is a nonprofit dedicated to getting free, quality public skate parks built and run successfully. They design and build skate parks all over the Carolinas and help with fundraising to complete the project. They also help with lessons on skating safety and yearly events such as competitions at skate parks. So why build a skate park? Let's explore some of the numerous benefits. They provide a place for physical exercise, social interaction, creativity and expression, skill development, safety as compared with sidewalk walks and roadways, and skating has proven to have positive effects on mental health. There's economic impact as well. Skaters travel all over to skate different parks. Skate parks engage our youth, develop our community, thrive on inclusivity, and are a creative use of space. So what about skating safety? According to the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission, skateboarding and other such activities are not as dangerous as they're commonly thought to be. In fact, skateboarding is statistically safer than exercise, biking, basketball, and football. So important facts are, one-third of skate injuries happen in the first week of learning. The vast majority of severe skateboarding accidents involve a motor vehicle. There are many skate parks that were built and named after skaters who unfortunately lost their lives on or near roadways. We don't want a tragedy to be the reason we finally provide skaters a safe place to do what they love. Skaters, scooter riders, and bikers are already riding our streets and parks. A professionally-built park provides a safe place for them to do so, avoiding collisions with pedestrians, motorists, and other dangers such as uneven and cracked surfaces. Now, skating without risk? No. Just like football, there's an assumption of risk each time you suit up and general liability insurance would be needed, just like any park. However, actual liability only applies when a city is proven negligent. Many other skate parks exist with very few problems as it pertains to liability. So finally we come to the ask. Um, you all have in your, your packet, uh, an official letter with all this on it. Um, so you can take a look at that when you have time. But essentially what we're asking for is a public professionally-designed and built skate park in Hartsville called Big Heart Skate Park. Um, it will be approximately fifteen thousand square feet, which is about a third of an acre, will be needed overall, with seven thousand of that actual skate surface such as concrete. The projected cost for a concrete park of this size is four hundred thousand dollars. With concrete, you would get twenty-plus years before maintenance. A skate-like structure, which is a type of, of fiber laminate, would be in two hundred thousand dollar range and you would get ten-plus years before maintenance. There's pros and cons to each of these that if the city decides to move forward, we could discuss, um, earlier. Skate Hartsville would like to raise funds for the completion of the project with city assistance obtaining grant and other sources of funding. Most parks are built with a mixture of city funds, fundraising, in-kind donations such as concrete and steel, grants, and county, state, or federal dollars. The bottom line here is that if the city puts up zero dollars, we're still ready to move forward with fundraising regardless of how long it takes. We would like the community input and forums on skate park design and rules. However, the park should ultimately be run and maintained by Parks and Recreation in the most appropriate way deemed fit by the city of Hartsville. The city should designate a space dedicated to the future skate park, an area that is visible, accessible to those with disabilities, inclusive, and open to all at no cost. And perhaps the most important ask is something that we can't put on paper, and that's the spirit of this project. We want the city to want this just as much as our community does. We want to work together with the city to make this happen. In so many other communities, we see cities put up roadblocks for projects like this. They agree to it, but leave the community to reach a goal that's unachievable on their own. We will need to all be rolling in the same direction if we want to make this happen. This is not something that can be accomplished without the city taking ownership of this project and pushing, pushing full steam ahead. And I'll close with this. So the idea of this park was not mine. The idea came from my little best friend and daughter, Sophia. Which is, she's in the room somewhere.
Where are you, Sophia?
She is the true founder of this initiative. She asked me back in March on the way home from Florence Skate Park why we didn't have a skate park in Hartsville and I had no good answer for her. I told her it has been tried many times over the years, but just did not work out. She said, "But we can try, can't we? We could call it Big Heart Skate Park since we're the small town with a big heart." So I told her if she was serious, I would support her in her dream as long as she was involved from start to finish. Since then, she's been to every meeting and every event, each time we met with Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and she's here tonight. But also since then, what began as an idea in the mind of a twelve-year-old girl has grown into a community movement. What we found is that there are hundreds and hundreds of kids just like her. There are hundreds of youth and adults who want healthy outlets for their children and for themselves. So this is not just about one person. It's not just about Skate Hartsville. This is about the kids and youth at LOL Steam School of Arts, Cypress Adventures, at Trent's, Trent Hill Center. This is about our kids at Boys and Girls Club, Child and Family Resource Center, the school district, and all the others dedicated to supporting our community. This is about the kids who don't make the team, the kids and their parents who don't have the time, ability, or means to go somewhere else or to buy equipment, the kids who have to walk if they want to go to the park. This is about the kids who don't usually have a voice on what happens in their city. This is about the lifelong skaters who are adults, and trust me, there's a lot of them, and the new skaters that will come to be. This is about this community and its spirit, what it really stands for, the small town with a big heart. So Mayor and Council, let's build Big Heart Skate Park. We sincerely thank you for your time. That's all I have, thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any questions or comments from council?
Not at this time.
None? Well, again, thank you for your time. Um, impressive presentation, obviously, that should go without saying. Um, I've always, uh, identified with, um, skate culture, so I, I understand what you're getting at. Um, and I, I, I'm a fan of the idea, it does come with costs, and we've talked a little bit about that. This differs somewhat from, we had a ribbon cutting for the pickleball course this morning and that was, uh, uh, the approach was different. We, citizens came to us with an idea and we sort of walked through the process together, um, and, and made decisions and, and compromises along the way. You've presented us with an incredible amount of, uh, information, the support that goes with it and all that, so I think, since much of this is new to us, um, let's start the process of, uh, evaluating, uh, the options. We have a little bit of idea of what the potential cost could be, that ultimately, when we're considering expending taxpayer dollars, we need to be very careful about how we do that. So I look forward to continuing this conversation and building upon what you've already done. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for what you've done and for coming here and the awesome presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
That moves us right on to proclamations. We have one for Arbor Day. I believe we have a representative here to accept the proclamation. Check, check, one, two, check, check one, two.
Love to see you this time of year. Dating back to eighteen seventy-two, Mr. Mayor proposed in Nebraska Board of Agriculture that Special Day be set on Friday aside from the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday now called Arbor Day was first observed for the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas South Carolina observes the holiday of the first Friday in December, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating cooling costs, moderating the temperature, and many other benefits that we all enjoy, there are renewable resources, given us paper, which is so important for our local industry. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and unify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy, spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsville and the State of South Carolina, do feel about to claim December sixth, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day in Hartsville and urge all of us to join in celebrating Arbor Day and support efforts to plant and protect trees and to promote their well-being for this and future generations. Thank you so much, Stephen, for the work that you do to protect and cultivate our trees here in Hartsville. I'm honored to present this to you this evening. If you have anything to say, it's your turn, sir.
Thank you for the, uh, support that you all give us.
It's our pleasure, thank you so much. Ready for the camera? What can you tell us about the tree planting next slide?
I believe we are continuing with some additional replanting.
Good, look forward to seeing you there, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, well, Mr. Manager, it is now officially your turn. What you got for us?
Are there any public comments?
Oh, did, I'm sorry, do we have any? Okay, well now it's officially your turn.
I just have two quick items to remind you guys of. Again, we do the Planning Advisory Committee meeting this Thursday. If you guys want to attend, just get with us, we'll let you know what's going on, it's a Thursday evening. And then Horror of the Holidays is next week, um, the twentieth, starting on twenty-first. Again, we have a wonderful weekend full of events. Gosh, Michelle, we have the Horror of the Holidays, starting downtown on the twenty-first, the tree lighting. And then we have the Kids Festival on Friday. Art and Wine on Friday, Kids Festival Saturday, and then the gala the ne- that night as well on Saturday night. So please come if you can. Love to see, it's gonna be a lot of people, a lot of having some fun, and there will be snows in the forecast as always for Horror of the Holidays, so we're very excited about that. Uh, but that's all I have, Chris.
Okay, good enough. Michelle, what kind of coffee do you drink? I don't know how you do it.
Something a little harder, but that's okay.
Seriously, I, I, I wanna know so I don't drink it. Thank you once again to our, uh, our staff and our volunteer committees for preparing the reports that you provide us, we really appreciate that. That brings us to the meat of the agenda, if you will. Um, item number six, unfinished business, the public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-four. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title in presentation for the record?
Yes, sir, this is, uh, public hearing and final ordinance of forty-four eighty-four. An ordinance authorized the sale of approximately six point nine five acres, real property identified as tax map parcel numbers zero five six one four zero one zero two seven and zero five six one four zero one nine hundred, located at seven twelve South A Street. Again, to present, this is a, uh, co- or agreement to move forward with a contract with Conley Development for the, um, development of Lincoln Village in South Hartsville. Uh, they did come to present to us an idea for, I believe, forty-eight townhomes? Fifty-eight town, excuse me, fifty-eight townhomes, that would be a tremendous asset, we believe, to the community. Uh, this will allow them to apply for the, uh, tax credits and then we will know more as we get, as we go forward.
Thank you very much, and, um, we have our manager here for questions, Anna Representative from Conley, if anybody from council has any questions or comments on, uh, ordinance forty-four eighty-four? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor, if you want to open the public hearing first.
Oh, shoot, public hearing, I'll never remember to do that. The public hearing on ordinance forty-four eighty-four is now open. If you'd like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to three minutes or less. Nobody's jumping up? Hearing none? The public hearing on ordinance forty-four eighty-four is now closed and now I would entertain a motion, uh, to approve the public hearing and final rea- or, excuse me, approve the final reading ordinance forty-four eighty-four.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance forty-four eighty-four is so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Have a motion in second, is there any discussion now?
Yes. I wanted to commend the group on the proposal that we were shown for the, um, complex there. They have all of what it needs for this place to be successful. And I want us to really, really keep in mind how they, we didn't have to ask them to do these things, they came to us with this already in mind and already in the plans to be able to do what we actually need doing. So anything that we need to do to help this project go forward, I would certainly, uh, appreciate the mayor and council's support for it.
Thank you, Councilwoman, ma'am. Anything else?
I believe now's the time for a vote.
There you go. All the, thank you, uh, any other comments from council? I don't wanna skip anybody, all right? Well, all those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-four, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-four is approved. Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate, uh, you working with us. Now, that brings us to executive session. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to SC Code FOIA Section thirty-four seventy A one two for discussion of appointments on boards, commissions, and committees and negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements related to the multi-county business park and recreation.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject, we have a potential for an amendment to that tonight.
Okay, to discuss, uh, personnel matters?
Yes, sir, if you would mind adding that.
Just add a little thing to it. Um, I would entertain a motion to amend, amend the emotion to include the words personnel matters in addition to contractual arrangements.
Mr. Mayor, your amendment so moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in second, do I have, uh, a vote to approve the motion as amended? If you vote yes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes, we now stand in executive session. Thank you all so much for being here, for your support and your participation in our city. We will take a quick four-minute break.